Uh, I think everybody has a copy of our work session agenda. Uh, I wanna just in the beginning here to share a couple of things with you on this uh work session agenda. Under Presentations, which would be item number three. Uh, you see that? Everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Opportunity twenty, twenty thirty. You see that, Dan?
I'm sorry, which?
On the, on the work session?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay. We're, we're gonna push that off to our next meeting. We've just got a lot of ground to cover tonight. So we're gonna, we're gonna push uh that item off to the next meeting. And then-
Sliding over, please?
Yes, yes. And then slide on down to item number five. Uh, A. Item number five, A. Staffing issues, exce- uh exceptional ed and budget. You see that? We're gonna move that to Board Matters at our six o'clock meeting. Does all that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Like to welcome everybody here. We got a good crowd. Thank you for coming. Uh, we have a lot of people that have signed up to speak tonight. Uh, we have a policy with regard to how we allow the public to be recognized and, and, and speak. And we're gonna follow that policy uh exactly the way it is written. Uh, some of you have signed up for different items and uh if you uh are here to, to speak uh to the Centerstone item, and many of you are, some of you are here to uh recommend that that MOU be continued. Uh, several of you, uh, I want you to know that, that you'll be given a collective ten minutes. So there may be twenty of you. I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, Ms. Jones will be involved that here in just a second. But you'll be given a collective ten minutes. So you guys are going to have to decide how you're gonna utilize that ten minutes. Conversely, if you're here to speak uh against uh reaffirming the MOU, you'll be given a collective ten minutes. If there is more than three of you. If there's only three of you, then you will be given your, your three minutes uh just like our policy states. Uh, also, we've got some folks that, that want to speak to a different topic. For example, some of you want to, to speak to uh mental health in general or suicide prevention in general. And you'll be given three minutes. But I want you to understand, you can't talk about Centerstone. So uh to make sure that that's very, very clear. Uh, we have some students here that have asked to speak. You students will be given three minutes. We're, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna take the liberty, make sure you students get at least your three minutes. Uh, so with all that being said, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to uh my vice chair, Ms. Jones.
Okay, before we get started, well, it's a lot going on today. So I'm gonna read the delegation statement once. When I'm done with this statement, it applies to everyone that will step to this mic for your time allotted to speak, okay? After I um read the statement, then I'm gonna go into clusters based off of topic. And then we'll go with further directions from there. So. Thank you for your interest in addressing the Hamilton County Board of Educations or administrators. Also, please do not present complaints or concerns you have about an individual employee of the school system. If you wish to voice those complaints and concerns, you should contact the central office and ask for a meeting with the superintendent, since the superintendent is responsible for individual employees. Please limit your remarks. Um, did, our general statement always says, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I will tell you when you have one minute left. And when you come, we need you to place, to state your name, your topic, and your address. Now, for the nine eighteen public comment section, we have currently um fourteen people signed up to speak on the topic of Centerstone. We're going to give ten minutes to the pro side, as Mr. Smith stated, and ten minutes to the con side. We will cut you off if you, if you utilize the pro time to speak against Centerstone or vice versa. Now, I think the easiest way to do this is if you are speaking in favor of re- uh reaffirming the Centerstone uh MOU, I'm gonna ask that you stand. And the names I have are Donovan Davis. Everybody stand. Yeah. If you, if you signed up for Centerstone, Donovan Davis, Elizabeth Haley, Rebecca Day, Shay Connor, Lauren Sloan, Katie Perkins, Haley Little, Ruth Walker, Sadie Vaughn, Sabrina Daniel, Taylor Lyons, Gail Green, Christine Pierce, and Carla Howell. So if you signed up period to speak as it relates to the topic of Centerstone, if I just called your name, please stand. Y'all need me to roll back through them? Donovan Davis, Elizabeth Haley, Rebecca Day, Shay Connor, Lauren Sloan, Katie Perkins, Haley Little, Ruth Walker, Sadie Vaughn, Sabrina Daniel, Taylor Lyons, Gail Green, Christine Price, and Carla Howell. Now, if you are speaking pro for Centerstone, come into the aisle. Yeah, I'm, I'm about to get there. So if I did not call your name, then you, I have you under either Mental Health Services in General or I have you as an individual speaker for a different subject, okay? Brenda, you raise it.
Uh, my concern is that I've heard them say that if I was going to speak at Centerstone at all, that I needed to be on the Centerstone category and not Mental Health Support.
So are you speaking in support of Mental Health Support or for Centerstone specifically?
In support of Mental Health Support and Centerstone, but I'm gonna mention Centerstone in my conversation, so I wanted to be able to get the reference.
Okay. Well, she can reference, right? Because they, some of them don't reference. Please know it. Okay, so, so which way, which way would you prefer to go in support of? Okay. All right, so that- All right. It, no. He's fine. He's in the hall. Y'all, I got it. I got it. I got it. Okay. All right. Now. Right. That's, you're Donovan, right? Okay. Now, I got my people, my pros in, in the aisle right here. Okay. Now, if you're a con. Let me ask you to- If you're in favor or against, how about that? For or not? If you're for, we have them in the aisle. If you're not, then line up behind them. Donovan, you ain't on my, you, you not lining up right. You, you was against the, okay. All right. Who, who doing the time? Mary, uh? Lord, I can't even. So who's gonna be your spoke? Okay. Well, yeah, you know what? This is, this is a whole lot going on. Okay. Do you, okay, so pros, fours, step to the side right here. Huddle up, figure out who goes to be the spokesperson. Spokesperson. Against, come over, come, step up for me. Come over here, huddle up, figure out who's gonna be your spokesperson. You got it? Like, are you gonna have, you gotta split up or you gonna? Okay, y'all wanna split them up? Ooh. If you wanna split them up, you can. If you wanna split them up, you can. But just remember, it's ten minutes. Yep, yes. Not, not yet. Because don't, whoever's going first, go ahead to the mic. You can stay. Maybe stand behind, just kinda line up to be ready to flow. Great. Great job. And then that just flew in my ear. I'm headed towards retirement. I got six years. I have to retire for myself. I was smart as a young adult with my 401K. Okay, y'all ready? Y'all ready? Y'all ready? Five, four, three, two, two and a half, two and three quarters, one, and time up. I'm actually a social worker. An LMSW. But I do like order. Now, we have at the podium, we're gonna start with who's, Ms. Green is gonna start. Is that, is that who's starting? I mean, I saw you there. Are you starting? Okay.
Okay, yeah, just to reiterate, each group is gonna get ten minutes. I will say when there's one minute left. All right. Do, do we want everybody to go ahead and announce themselves real quick or do we, did, did their names or what have you?
Name, address, and-
Before the time.
Before I start my timer.
Gail Green, two twelve Grayson Road.
Rebecca Day, thirteen thirty-five Aslinger Road.
Christine Price, twelve eleven Laura Wood.
Carla Howell, seven zero zero nine Mill Dear Place.
Sabrina Daniel, forty-four ten Maryland Drive, A Street.
Okay.
As the August, at the August School Board meeting, six members of the Hamilton County School Board voted courageously to end the memorandum of agreement with the Centerstone Mental Health. Their decision affirmed a core conservative principle. Parents, not outside organizations, must remain at the center of their children's upbringing and well-being. We acknowledge that some principals, teachers, and families have expressed concern that ending this agreement will leave students without needed support. We do not dismiss these concerns. Student well-being matters deeply, but the reality is that Hamilton County Schools has already invested twenty-two million dollars per year to hire more than two hundred and fifty student support coaches, counselors, and social workers. They also receive just under one million annually in federal Title I and Title IV funds for ten additional student support service positions. That's over twenty-three million dollars every year dedicated to mental health services within our schools. The conservative position is firm. Hamilton County is not abandoning student mental health. It is already invested at record levels to support our students. What we reject is the outsourcing of our children's care to outside groups that are not accountable to parents or taxpayers. Cornerstone has been in Hamilton County Schools for nearly ten years. Centerstone, a decade, a decade is long enough to evaluate results, and the outcomes do not justify continuing. In fact, Centerstone was never required to go through a formal RFP, Request for Proposal, process when it first entered our schools, meaning no competitive bids, no full transparency, and no guarantee that it was the best option for families. Centerstone's own agreement states it will only inform parents as necessary. That is unacceptable. Parents must always be fully informed about any counseling or mental health interventions involving their children. Even more concerning, Centerstone and similar organizations promote ideological content that extends beyond basic mental health. Matters of identity, sexuality, and gender should be guided by parents and families, not introduced in school by outside providers. Public schools exist to teach academics and support student success, not advance social agendas. No government program or activist-driven model can ever replace the authority of parents or the strength of families in guiding a child's emotional, moral, and spiritual development. Since the vote, progressive activist groups, including TEA, Public School Strong, Caleb, Chattanooga, and Moms for Social Justice have mobilized to pressure and even intimidate our school board members. These groups are pursuing a political agenda that does not reflect the values of everyday Hamilton County families. We thank the school board members for standing strong in the face of this pressure. And we urge you to remember that parents, not activists, not bureaucrats, must remain in charge of their children's mental health and education.
In light of recent tragic events in our nation, I want to begin by saying how important it is that we speak with truth without hate and that we stand firm without stirring division for its own sake. You will hear from a long list of speakers, but I want to draw your attention to something very important about who is speaking. On the surface, this looks like a broad grassroots movement. But when you take a closer look, a pattern emerges. Many of the people pushing to reinstate Centerstone are not neutral parents or everyday community members. They are activists with clear ideological agendas. Some are connected to statewide organizations. Some run groups that promote controversial agendas to children. Some are former school board candidates still looking for influence. Others are union-aligned operatives working hand-in-hand with political networks. Even some students speaking tonight are tied to activist groups and were part of the strategy call designed to pressure this board. This is not parents rising up. This is a coordinated activist campaign. On one of those private calls led by a TEA employee, they admitted they only had nineteen people involved. They admitted parents were not the ones leading this. They admitted they're using their relationships with certain board members to plan political strategy, not to help children as they claim. Meanwhile, they are running pressure campaigns, organized emails, coordinated signs, scripting talking points, all designed to create the illusion of broad support. When our child, what our children need instead for, is, is for the school system to teach wisdom and discipline, to help them understand the insights of the wise, teach them to live disciplined and successful lives, to help them do what is right, just, and fair. Board members, you were elected to stand on principle. Be strong and courageous. Remember that your accountability is to God, the voters, and the children, not to activist groups that have gained a foothold in Hamilton County Schools. I urge you to see this campaign for what it is. A coordinated political effort, not a grassroots movement of Hamilton County parents.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Christine. I live in Hamilton County and I haven't been involved with Tennessee politics before. Seems like every other week, there's some news article about some niche topic I care about, like single staircase multifamily building permits being allowed. And I'm like, great, this is exactly what I would vote it for. My cares and concerns and values are being represented. There's a lot of people like me. People who see you, our elected officials, as competently leading the future of our schools. The school board recently made the wise and voter-supported decision to cut ties with Centerstone. This company puts ideological goals, goals pushed by national organizations, ahead of the actual well-being of Hamilton County children. It was unwisely given a decade inside of our schools, pushing an agenda that damaged parent-child relationships, instilled victimhood narratives, and pushed ideology, which is shown by plenty of research, to be actively harmful to the ba- vast number of children and young adults who engage in it. It has not only been ineffective in its stated goal. It has been actively harmful to the children who have come under its care. Hamilton County children are not playthings. They're not pawns in a political chessboard. What you see before you is be, going to be presented to you, to you, our elected officials. This is not actually democracy. This is activators, activists elevating the most fringe political views. It is the word shaped by multi-billion dollar national organizations and their offshoots. Groups intend on converting the rich diversity of our nation to their own extremely specific, extremely fringe ideals. These are well-funded, well-organized, but not ultimately well-intentioned organizers. And they do not represent Hamilton County taxpayers, parents, or anyone who loves and cares about the children. Children's mental health is important. And that is precisely why organizations like Centerstone are able to put on a skin suit of concern to siphon money and push ideological agendas under the false guidance of helping. I command, commend the council for cutting ties with this actively harmful corporation, not just because that's the will of the electorate, but because it's what's best for Hamilton County kids. They are wonderful, brilliant, unique individuals who are growing and learning who and what they are and what their place is in the world. They are not empty vessels to shove national politics into, to be made into lifelong victims of disempowering grievances. Children's mental health is too important to be left to subversive partisan organizations like Centerstone. Thank you.
Thank you to the school board and for the citizens here for allowing me to speak. I stand against use of Centerstone or any organization that is working to advance a political agenda in schools that is contrary to the deeply held beliefs of other taxpayers in the district. If someone wants to preach that littering is bad and picking up trash is good, well, I've never met anyone in my life who would have any issue with that. So I don't see a problem with that. I personally oppose the advocacy of-
One minute left.
-ideology and the other things that Centerstone has been doing with minors. But it is particularly offensive when it is done on the dime of taxpayers who oppose it. Now, here I will depart perhaps from some of my GOP friends. I would also oppose using taxpayer funds, funded school programs to push a conservative agenda if it is opposed by other taxpayers in the district, no matter how much I might, might agree with it. We already have plenty of divisiveness in America and in the world. We don't need any more of it. In the name of civility, respect for others, points of views, parental rights, and simple fairness, we must not allow the advocacy of any agenda that is opposed by taxpayers, especially when it is deeply viscerally opposed, to stand. I urge the school board members to abide by the sacred American tenants of fairness and justice and reject an MOA for Centerstone. Thank you. That's time.
I thought you all divided that up. I, I, I'm not. I'm just-
Brenda Jean Adamson, eighty-one oh one Bork Memorial Drive.
Sadie Vaughn, seven four seven seven Commons Boulevard.
Ruth Walker, sixteen sixty-two Capanda Trail.
Shay Connor, eleven oh five Hannover Street.
Haley Little, two seven one Acorn Oaks Circle.
Donovan Davis, ten fifty-one Wynwood Road, East Ridge.
I'm a Hamilton County resident and former teacher and the former principal of Woodmore Elementary School. I'm here today to urge you to reconsider the decision to remove Centerstone for, from our schools. When I served as principal at Woodmore, Centerstone was not just an outside partner, it was a lifeline. Their counselors provided consistent, daily support to students who faced challenges far beyond academics. They built relationships, created safe spaces, and offered continuity of care that cannot be replaced. This became especially vital during one of the darkest moments in our local school history, the Woodmore Bus Tragedy. In those days and months that followed, Centerstone's presence was invaluable. They walked with us into classrooms, sat with grieving children, supported families, and equipped teachers with tools to care for students in crisis. Without Centerstone, the path to healing would have been far more difficult. I also want to share with you some things personal to me. While I was principal, one of the Centerstone staff members, Jashari White, recognized signs in me and encouraged me to seek additional treatment and support. Because of her insight and her encouragement, I was able to get the help I needed to work through my own trauma. I will always be grateful for Jashari White and the support of Centerstone. This is the kind of impact that Centerstone brings into our schools: hope, encouragement, tools, and support. Today, our students continue to face trauma, poverty, and instability. Removing Centerstone does not just end a contract, it disrupts continuity of care for the very students who need it most. That burden falls back on all school staff members, from the cafeteria to the front office clerical staff, to the nurses, ed assistants, school counselors, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, and after-school workers who are already stretched too thin and cannot fill the scapula alone. This is not about being right. This is about doing what is right for our students.
The, the board's decision to end their agreement with Centerstone removed thirty-two licensed professionals who serviced over two thousand and five hundred individuals last year. The reason I'm here to speak is because I've experienced firsthand what happens when there are not enough counselors. A little over four years ago today, my hometown, Waverly, Tennessee, experienced a devastating flood. By eight AM, the water was at the tires of my car, and before eight-thirty, my car was floating in the backyard. Twenty-one of our friends died that day, including my childhood neighbor, who was only a freshman. And the, um, she, it took nearly two years for me to go back home and for us to recover. And during this time, my grades, my mental health suffered. I needed help advocating for me and my family. I needed help. I needed resources, but there was a lack of them. At my school, we had one school counselor responsible for over five hundred individuals, and many of us suffered in silence. I'm still here today, struggling to keep my GPA up because of this. I'm asking you to reconsider your vote, and I'm asking you to put politics aside and to think about your students first, to choose kids, to choose, to choose us, to choose counselors, to choose Centerstone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ruth Walker. I live in District Three. My kids go to Normal Park Elementary School in District Six. Um, I'm a developmental psychologist and I'm an associate professor of psychology. So I'm asking you today to reinstate the licensed and credentialed counselors that were serving with Centerstone. And I'm asking on behalf of my five and my seven-year-old, who are currently Normal Park Elementary students, I'm here advocating for them while they're celebrating my son's birthday. Because sometimes as parents, we have to advocate for those who can't speak for themselves. And sometimes we have to juggle multiple responsibilities, and that is where Centerstone stops in. So them being able to offer those services stop, allows me and frees me up as a parent to be able to not after-school run them from appointment to appointment if they need them. I'm also asking on behalf of one of my students, who called their school board representative, which was not an easy thing to do, took a lot of courage, and was told that she didn't have her facts straight. And I want to tell you where she got those facts. She got those facts from the Tennessee Department of Education website, a website that clearly states that Tennessee ranks fiftieth, that's last in the nation, in terms of youth access to mental health services in our state, in the country. And with that agreement terminated, it, those resources are now harder to access. I'm all, on behalf of my former students, students who are now getting education and learning evidence, press practices, to become licensed clinical social workers, school counselors, school psychologists. And they'll be soon looking for jobs to serve our students here in Hamilton County, and now there are less of them. So I'm asking you all to remember that this, we're asking you to, to make this decision on behalf of our students and behalf of the people that you're here to represent.
My name is Shay Connor. I'm a proud public school graduate, a mother of four children in the Hamilton County School System, a physician, and the wife of a board member. This is the first board meeting that I have ever attended because as both a wife and a constituent who voted for my husband, I trust him to do his job without my oversight. Last month, when the school board voted to terminate the decade-long contract that the county has had with Centerstone, my elected representative did his job well. He re, he voted in the best interest of the students and in concordance with the will of our community. Unfortunately, the majority of the board don't, did not. And I think we need to take a minute to be real open and honest about why exactly that happened. Because the truth is, the six of you who voted to end that partnership that provides critical mental health services for thousands of kids in this county, did so because the Moms for Liberty, a recognized extremist hate group, that Centerstone hands out a pamphlet to kids who may be questioning their sexual orientation that basically says, "It's okay if you're gay, your life still has value." And somehow, on some fundamental late-
Excuse me, hold, hold on one second. Pause this, pause the time. So what we're not gonna do is be disrespectful. Because when other groups were named in the previous comments, we allowed it. So we have to give the same respect to our peers. And if you cannot, or if it's gonna become offensive to you, then because this is public comment and we have no control over it, I would suggest that you step out now.
Somehow, on some fundamental level, you disagree with that philosophy. And now I lost my train of thought. I, I will just end, in the interest of time, by saying this decision will have irreparable consequences for children, families, and our community. And each of you has to take responsibility for that. When the next preventable tragedy occurs, and it inevitably will, the blood will figuratively be on your hands, but it is me and my colleagues who will literally have to wash it off of ours.
I am a former Hamilton County teacher. I'm a concerned community member. And we are-
And we are supposed to be able to count on our school board members to be transparent, thoughtful, and responsible. By voting no, six of you failed to be any of those things. A common theme that I heard during your discussion last month was that you don't know the backgrounds and ideologies of Centerstone employees, as if you know the background and ideologies of every single employee in Hamilton County. That's an absurd argument to make. They follow the same guidelines as Hamilton County, they've been in our schools for 10 years now. When you say stuff like this, stuff that sounds reasonable on the surface, it's actually undermining the professionalism of these mental health providers. You have ripped away the services of over 2,500 kids, all because you are worried that they might receive, and only with their parents' explicit consent, might I add, support from someone you personally don't align with. There's no track record of systemic unprofessionalism by Centerstone employees. Because if there was, you all would be talking about it right now. Again, this is not a new partnership. And what's frustrating me the most is that some of you won't even come right out and say exactly what specific ideologies you're so worried about. Instead, you're just trying to build a general sense of distrust and fear for what we can only presume are your own personal agendas, built on your ideologies. Please, take your jobs as school board members more seriously. Please reconsider this decision and do the responsible thing. Or at the very least, be more transparent about what you're so afraid of. The students of Hamilton County deserve that. Thank you.
I'm a school counselor.
One minute.
High school, thank you. What I did is I actually went to the school board's website to look at y'all's goals, y'all's policies, what y'all want to implement. One of the things that you have put down to your goals is to enhance, strengthen programs that promote good citizenship, teach character education, and value diversity. So I ask that you hold to your goals. In a policy that we have to do as teachers and educators every year is follow this policy, 6.415. This is on student suicide prevention. And the policy starts off by saying, "The board is committed to protecting the health and the well-being of all students and understands that physical behavior and emotional health are integral components to students' achievement and overall well-being." That's a policy that demands, or requires, I should say, I shouldn't say demands. It requires all of us educators in Hamilton County, every year, to spend two hours of watching informational videos about student suicide prevention. I'm asking you to hold to your goals and your policies that you set forth.
Thank you.
I can't have everybody's attention, I need to quiet to move on to the next page. Next, we have three individuals listed for mental health services. That is Deirdre Catlett, I hope I'm saying that right. Crystal Bone, and then it was Brenda Jean Addison, but Brenda yielded her time for Centerstone, correct? Okay, so I have Deirdre Catlett and Crystal Bone. And you have three minutes each.
My name is Deirdre Catlett, my home is at 1509 East 14th Street. I'm a mother of four, one at Red Bank High School. I'm the operations director for Be the Change Youth Initiative, a nonprofit based here in Chattanooga. We are focused on youth empowerment and mental health advocacy. And I have a son who struggled with, for years, with depression and suicidal ideation. Given the climate of our country at the local, state, and federal level, I feel it's more urgent than ever to share what we are hearing from students. Again and again, they tell us they are carrying the heavy burdens of religious trauma. And that's something our community cannot afford to ignore anymore in this climate. And I feel like it's something that we are not talking about in the mental health conversation. And to let it be clear, this is not about vilifying faith, I'm a proud follower of Jesus Christ. I have my master's in biblical and theological studies from Dallas Theological Seminary. I've worked in ministry for almost two decades, but during the majority of those years, I espoused the very same theology that caused so much harm to these students. Until two things happened eight years ago. The first was my son's battle with depression and suicidal ideation in middle school. Night after night, I sat by his bed terrified that he would not wake up. At the very moment that we needed compassion, our church turned its back. Silence were refuge should have been, condemnation were love was promised. I wish I could say that our story is unique, but it is not. The last eight years, we have met countless families who have faced the same thing. Dismissed, shame told their pain was weakness or lack of faith, and students condemned to hell for their sexual orientation. The one place where we were told we could find hope became the very place that broke them. And I bring this up today because I fear that those same harmful ideologies continue to influence the path that we are taking in this community, as a country. The second was a gentle reminder for my daughter, who started Be the Change when she was 15. And she thought, she would tell me that my well-intentioned beliefs were in reality hurting people instead of helping them, and resembled nothing of Jesus. It's humbling to have your child call you out. But I'm so grateful that she did, I'm so grateful that I listened. I wish she was here tonight to speak to you, but she's actually speaking at an event for suicide prevention awareness downtown. Lastly, and maybe most importantly, I implore you to listen to the youth in this room, the youth in our community who are most vulnerable right now. They are absolutely incredible. Their voices should be heard, their words should be given great weight. Our kids are in crisis, and they deserve policies that provide real mental health support while protecting them from harmful ideologies masquerading as solutions. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Crystal Bone, my address is 3505 Graham Mount Pike, and I'm speaking on mental health tonight. I'm the mom of two public school kids in District 2. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about something that affects every student, teacher, and family in our district, which is mental health. Across the country, we're facing a mental health crisis among young people. According to recent national surveys, rates of anxiety, depression, and suicidal thoughts among children and adolescents has risen sharply over the last few decades. One in three high school students reports persistent feelings of sadness and hopelessness, and one in five seriously consider suicide. Mental health issues don't just affect a small group, they can affect students in every classroom, every grade, and every background. We all know that in recent years, our country also has seen a heartbreaking rise in school shootings. There have been 165 school shootings in 2025 already, and 42 and a half of those are done by students. When these shootings occur, we hear guns don't kill people, people kill people, and that this is a mental health issue. When mental health needs go unaddressed, the consequences ripple outward. Students may have trouble concentrating, their grades can slip, and their relationships suffer. Ultimately, our entire school community is impacted. Research shows that when students have access to mental health resources, their academic performance improves, absenteeism decreases, and disciplinary issues decline. In other words, investing in mental health support is not just compassionate, it is practical. So I thank you for investing those millions of dollars into our student support coaches, into our counselors, and social workers. These folks are an important part of the picture, but they are not the total solution. Our school counselors focus on academic support, career guidance, and general student well-being. They help students with short-term concerns like stress, peer conflict, and study skills. They are not equipped to diagnose or treat serious trauma or mental health disorders. On the other hand, licensed therapists provide long-term therapy and are trained to diagnose and treat mental health disorders such as depression, anxiety, and PTSD. They hold a master's or doctoral degree in mental health field and are licensed by the State Board of Mental Health and can offer individual, group, or family therapy, and may collaborate with psychiatrists when medication is needed. School counselors support students' everyday challenges within the school environment, while licensed therapists provide more in-depth clinical treatment for mental health conditions. Both are important and often work best when they collaborate. Knowing this, it's so important to make resources accessible to our students. Private therapy is expensive. My daughter needed therapy last year, I was able to take her to Roots Counseling. It was $125 a session, and every week I would have to take my daughter out of school early in order to make her appointments. Now, I am so grateful that I had the money and the time and the resources to make that happen, but as we know, that is not the same for all families. Having a school-based therapy program is incredible. Was that my time?
Three minutes.
Bring back Centerstone. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have individual speakers, starting with our student speakers. Reed Hampton. Molly Hampton. And Sophia Baristecky. I was getting it, I had to sound it out. You each have three minutes individually, okay?
Reed Hampton, 1229 Mountain Brook Circle. All children thrive and experience a future without limits, that's the goal. Last month, this board made a decision that cannot stand. So tonight I rise to ask in the most urgent of terms for you to restore Centerstone's services immediately. Not next week, not next month, today. This board has abdicated its responsibilities to its constituents, to families, and to students by knowingly and willingly choosing to discriminate against one group of students. One group of students who are objectively the most at risk from mental health crises. To do so, you cut mental health services for every student. This decision to target one group of vulnerable students was a dereliction of your duty. Centerstone's therapists have one ideology: to protect and to serve all their patients, and to ensure their mental health and safety, full stop. That should also be the school board's ideology: to protect and serve all students. To ensure that all students receive services, Centerstone commits to providing appropriate help to their LGBTQ patients. That is what members of this board have expressed concern about. Now whether you believe that the LGBTQ people are valid or exist, which for the record, we are and we do. The fundamental fact that members of my community face more mental health challenges than any other demographic cannot be ignored. LGBTQ young people are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide as our straight peers. The Trevor Project estimates that more than 1.8 million LGBTQ young people seriously consider suicide every year. 1.8 million children. And at least one of those children attempts suicide every 45 seconds. Regardless of our political ideology, we should all agree, Democrat, Republican, and Independent, that this is unacceptable. All students, especially our most vulnerable, deserve to be protected and deserve to receive mental health services. On behalf of the 1.8 million, I am begging you to restore mental health services post-haste. And I hope, hope to God, that you restore them now before any more harm is done to our communities. Restore them now before the unimaginable happens again.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Molly Hampton, and I'm a 16-year-old junior at St. Martin Middle High School. Tennessee is ranked 50th in mental care for youth. More than two-thirds of Tennessee youth with clinical depression go untreated, and only 12% receive consistent treatment, according to the Tennessee Association of Mental Health Organizations. With the school board's recent decision to end a 10-year partnership with Centerstone, you are contributing to that horrible statistic, not working to actively change, or to positively change it. Centerstone provided care to 2,500 students in Hamilton County, who have now been left without a crucial outlet. As a student who's been in therapy for two years, I am horrified by what this decision will mean for my fellow youth. I am fortunate enough to have the ability to seek counseling outside of Centerstone, but some of my fellow students aren't so lucky. Counseling for my anxiety and my OCD has helped me to become a better student and a better member of my community. This is the kind of help that Centerstone offered in 32 schools. Taking that away will detrimentally affect students' psychological safety. On behalf of the students you represent, I beg you to revote on the memorandum of understanding with Centerstone and restore this service to the students who have just lost their outlet without a safety net in place.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Sophia Baristecky, and I'm a sophomore student at CCA. My address is 3008 13th Avenue, and I'm here to talk about Centerstone. It's important that every student has access to quality licensed mental health care. In the past, I've been able to see a therapist, thanks to my parents' flexible jobs, allowing them to take me out of school. In Hamilton County, there are many students who need professional mental health care and were reliant on Centerstone to receive it. A lot of these kids don't have the same privileges that I did, when my parents could just leave work for an hour and take me. I would like to use my time today to share a glimpse into some of these students' lives. I spoke with a 16-year staff member from a Title I school, I'll keep both anonymous. They told me about kids whose guardians worked all the time, kids with incarcerated parents, a kid whose parents died in a fire, kids who experienced gun violence. All of these students have immense trauma and circumstances that make it impossible for them to attend counseling outside of school. In many cases, especially at this Title I school, the regular school counselors are not enough. The decision to terminate the MOU with Centerstone confuses me. It confuses my peers, it confuses my teachers, it confuses every adult that I know. We are confused that representatives have made a decision that will have such horrific consequences. The argument against Centerstone operating in schools is that parents couldn't be sure of a counselor's ideologies, that we couldn't know their beliefs. But we do know that all counselors are licensed professionals and have all had background checks. We do know that parents and guardians give consent for their child to receive Centerstone counseling at school. If the concern is about protecting students, ensuring they have access to mental health professionals is incredibly important for keeping them safe. Kids are exposed to all sorts of terrible things these days, whether it be through social media, real-life experiences, or even just hearing about the last school shooting on the news. Children are so much more impressionable than people think. Once again, I reiterate, kids need access to mental health care. More than anyone, kids in Title I schools need access during the school day. I am representing the kids who are unable to represent themselves here today. We are asking you to please consider our lives, consider our futures. Thank you.
Carol Smith. Carol Smith. Now, these are the individuals that are speaking on topics differently from Centerstone or mental health. You get three minutes each. Say your name, address, and your topic.
Yes, my name is Carol Smith, my address is 2436 Class Street. My topic is the ideological focus in our schools. I'm a pediatric nurse, I'm a researcher, and also biblical counselor. I wanted to start off by saying, first of all, I believe that everyone in this room cares about kids. Everyone, I don't care what side of the political aisle that you're on, I truly believe that. My concern is the growing rate of LGBT amongst our youth. There was a Gallup poll that was done in 2020, and they did it from 1940 to now. In 1940, it was 1.2% of the population, now Gen Z, it's 17.2, and Barnard has it at 39%. They have the American Psychological Association on their website, when they're looking at sexual orientation, they're not sure exactly what causes it, they go from, well, maybe it's this, and maybe it's that, there is no consensus on the website. In 1973, Dr. Robert Spitzer spearheaded an office to remove In 1973, Dr. Robert Spitzer spearheaded an office to remove homosexuality from the mental disorders because he believed it was immutable. He believed people could not change. But in 2001, he brought research to the APA, and this is his old word, some homosexuals can make substantial shifts towards heterosexuality. Okay? Also, Lisa Diamond, she is a researcher, she is a lesbian, she did a 10-year study, and she wrote a book on sexual fluidity. And what she said is that, again, some men and women can change. Her view of sexual orientation is that it is not immutable, people can and do change. I have great compassion for the LGBT community. My heart breaks for them. There is something-
You out?
Excuse me, please. There is something called the ACE studies, the Adverse Childhood Experiences, and this gentleman was right. Those who identify as LGBT are much higher. They have a sexual abuse rate, child sexual abuse of almost 50%, depending on the studies. They have more physical abuse, more mental abuse, more emotional abuse. The Human Rights Campaign, they had something that said, this broke my heart, nearly 48% of bisexual women had their first sexual assault between ages 11 to 17. It just breaks my heart. And they also said transgender and bisexual experience sexual violence which begins early and often during childhood. Why do I bring this up? It is epidemic in this nation, and I believe it is a factor that leads to same-sex attraction. I wanted to show you something. There is a video on YouTube, it's free, it's called "In His Image", and I can give this to anybody who wants. This tells the story of people like, hold on one second. Sorry. Laura Perry, she lived as a transgender for 10 years, and has since came out of that. She started a ministry toward transgenders. She detransitioned, and she's a married woman. Janice Schick, she's written a book. When she was nine years old, her father came to her and said, "I want to become a woman." So she wrote a book, it's called "My Daddy's Secret." She has a ministry to those who struggle with gender dysphoria, and she's written a number of books even for children. And also there's Stephen Black. Stephen Black, for 30 years, has counseled those who have unwanted same-sex attractions or other type of sexual things. And he said in his 30-
Time. I got it, y'all. I got it. We got it, we got it. Everybody's done, if anybody wants, same order. No. Ma'am, ma'am, please have a seat. Have a seat, have a seat, have a seat. Have a seat. Okay, Jeanette. Jeanette. Hey, 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 hey. Excuse me, everybody. Ma'am, ma'am, if you have something to pass out, you can give it- Or you can leave them on the table. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Jeanette.
Thank you. Jeanette O'Markele, 6731 Flagstone Drive. I'm here to talk about our educators' concerns this month. Chairman Smith and board members, thank you for the work you do on behalf of our schools. Each month, you make decisions that affect nearly 100,000 students, staff, and families in Hamilton County. That is a tough place to be. The way those decisions are made matters as much as the outcomes, and educators are concerned about that. Last month, I offered a very clear contrast. Your update to the cell phone policy was thoughtful, it was deliberate, it was discussed over multiple meetings. You sought feedback, and you set a timeline that gave schools, students, and families about six weeks to prepare for that change. That process was wise, and it allowed for a smooth transition that is still happening. That same night, however, the decision not to sign effectively discontinuing an MOU-related school-based mental health services was handled very differently. The discussion was held in a very short period of time with no opportunity for feedback from the community. Within roughly 12 hours of that decision, students returned to school expecting to see the counselor they had been meeting with. Staff and families had not been informed. There was no transition window, no opportunity to end services responsibly, and no guidance for teachers about what to say when students inevitably asked why they were no longer meeting with their counselor. As the school year was just beginning, two weeks, many teachers had not had the needed time to build the kind of relationship that makes difficult conversations possible. The result was preventable anxiety for students and additional strain on staff that rippled across the schools and classrooms and affected students' focus and learning. Educators' concerns are about children. Students cannot learn at their best, as we know, when they have emotional health needs going unmet. Parents can't fully engage when they feel their child is struggling without support. My request is simple. Apply the same thoughtful process you used for the cell phone policy to any decision that ends or changes student services. That means providing a clear timeline, ensuring communication with families, preparing staff with guidance, and creating space for transition. I respect the complexity of your role. I'm not here to debate the value of mental health services tonight, because you've already heard that, but to ask for a consistent, student-centered process. Thoughtful planning protects students and equips staff to serve them well. Thank you for your time.
Angelica?
Good evening, members of the board. I want to begin by naming the recent Supreme Court decision-
Can you say your name, sorry?
Sorry, sorry, guys. My name is Angelica Acevedo. My address is 121 Goodson Avenue. I want to begin by naming the recent Supreme Court decision that expanded the power of ICE to engage in racial profiling. This ruling makes it easier for people, especially Spanish-speaking families and communities of color, to be targeted by officers and other law enforcement simply because of how they look or the language they speak. I am a proud member of the LGBTQ community. I am a proud child of immigrants, and I am a proud Latino. I apologize. Students cannot leave these parts of themselves at the door. They carry that fear with them into every classroom. And that fear shapes not only how they learn, but also how they see themselves and their place in our community. I want to thank you for your courage in passing the resolution against HB 7093. That decision showed that the Hamilton County schools will not reject any student based on where they come from, that they reject fear and discrimination and value safety, dignity, and inclusion of every student. It sent a powerful message. Every child belongs here, no matter their background, and that their voice and humanity matter. Do not let personal beliefs or fear-based rhetoric replace evidence, compassion, and justice. This is why the choices you make matter so deeply. Trauma and fear are not abstract concepts. They affect real children every single day. Students live with stress and anxiety that can manifest in learning challenges, health issues, and social struggles. And when supports are cut, the burdens fall on teachers and school staff who are already stretched thin and not equipped always to handle highly specialized needs like PTSD, depression, or suicide risks, all symptoms of racism. And that gap leaves kids vulnerable and places impossible expectations on adults who want to help but lack the training and resources to do so effectively. I know this personally. As a Latino who grew up in the South, I was bullied and treated racially by my peers. And to top it all off, my home life was unstable. So I didn't feel safe at home or at school. That constant fear and lack of safety deeply impacted my sense of self, my learning, and my future. I became very depressed, and at 13, I attempted to take my life, a decision I could never take back if I had succeeded. The truth is, I survived because I had access to higher-level mental health support when my school counselor could not meet my evolving needs. Thank you for your time.
Jessica, Jessica Perkins?
Jessica Perkins, 6564 Deacon Road. This is heavy. So I'm gonna scrap what I wrote, and I'm going to, I'm gonna pray for my time. Heavenly Father, I bring before you the school board, our administration, our teachers, our principals, our students. There are a lot of heavy hearts in this room, Lord. And we know that you are the one who brings healing. We know that you are the one who brings safety, brings hope, brings encouragement. We know that you are the one that brings these things into our lives. Lord, I pray for these students. They are going through a lot of things. A lot of things that we didn't have to go through when we were younger. There's so many, so much access in technology. Lord, you know that there's, we can't even tell what's true and what's not true anymore, but we know one thing is true. We know the Bible is true. We know that everything in the Bible is true, and that we can go back to that. That that is where our hope comes from, that is where our peace comes from. We know that Jesus saves. We know that these students need help. Lord, we know that you can help them. We know what makes us healthy. We know that family, faith, and Jesus are the things that really, really help us. So Lord, I want to rebuke any spirit of destruction on the lives of our students in Hamilton County schools. Tonight, in your name, I pray, amen.
Harriet Reed. Harriet.
Hello, I'm Harriet Reed. My address is on Vail. And I would like to speak today about things that can improve Hamilton County schools. And at the top of my list is parental involvement. And I really think that we need to rethink ways to get parents involved in school, not only for their mental health and other issues, but for every issue. The goal of the school should be education, and everything else should be the parent's responsibility. I know that sometimes things are more convenient in one way or another, and no one wants things to be so out of reach for anyone. I think that if you don't have private insurance, there are county services and other services that can be used during the evening hours even. There are counselors who have that available. But let me just say that in Hamilton County schools, there's a lot of things that are going on that I think are stymying education. I know that we're in a technology age, but with, for example, giving children, primary school children, Chromebooks, they don't learn penmanship. And there is a connection between writing and thinking. And we need to make sure that children have critical thinking skills, and that by the time that they're in the third grade, that they're actually able to read. And as their reading improves, they're able to learn critical thinking skills, because this allows them to not be indoctrinated about anything. So no matter what you think is the right thing, whether it be over here or over here, we need to ensure that students can go and read about it on their own. And we're not equipping students to do that. What we're doing is we're telling students things to make them believe. And I'll just give you a quick example. I went to school, grade school, in the 60s. And in that private school, they taught that slavery was awful, and that black people had been put in this position, and white people, you know, all these things that was in the history book. What my parents told me, and my mother and my father, and encouraged me to learn, because we were all born in Birmingham, Alabama. My parents raised in Jim Crow South, okay? So what they told me, and what they taught me to do, is to go research it. And I found out that black people, free men, had slaves back in the day. Also, who do you think sold the slaves? From the coast of Africa, okay? These were black people. So you can't just look at one race or another race and call that race evil or call those people evil. Thank you.
Melanie Stover. Melanie. She's sick. Okay, Ms. Mark Herndon. Mr. Herndon?
My name is Mark Herndon. I live at 2907 Leggett Road. What an unexpected opportunity we have. We get to set an example for our youth. Set an example for other districts in our beautiful state. My hope isn't to change your mind in regards to your concerns. Your concerns are valid. Your concerns are shared by others. The wishful hope that we have today as a grieving family isn't that we win or that you lose. We can both win. We can all win today. But it starts in situations like these. I don't know how much we will need to lose before we change the path that we're on. We can't lose sight of the destination of this path, which is our children. Your concerns about the services offered via accreditation, the oversight, the methods, all of those. We've had this service for nine years. I suppose in part, you ran and were elected to this seat because you believed in making our school system better than it was before you got involved. Some of you have been involved for a long time. Your long-term involvement only confirms that you want to do good for our kids. Unfortunately, you now navigate the difficult task of supplying our children with the best education we can, while at the same time ensuring that our political landscape doesn't harm our children. You may not have realized how important this issue was to some of us. Many of, many of us have either never shared your concerns or, like I have, shared a version of your concern. This week alone, in our community, not in Utah, not in Nashville, here, we had two instances that I know of that fortunately did not turn tragic in our schools. And as many services as the Constitution allows you to add, please add. Do not allow this gap to continue, please. For the sake of the ones that could care less what you decide right now. For the sake of the ones who don't realize that they need help. Do not set this as an example to our children. They don't do what we say. They do what we do. Please, I'm not asking that you resign your political, religious, or moral standard. I am asking that you see that there are too many who do not share that concern and are pleading for help.
Hold on, I'm the timekeeper. So just press pause, and out of respect. Because if it was you and you were in his situation, I'd let you finish.
I'd let you finish.
No.
We don't need to understand all of their needs. Those needs grow daily. Let's not give them another reason to need these services. Our children are... They need to see some glimmer of hope. Please address your concerns. Just don't rob those that don't agree with you in the process. We are either robbing them or we are letting them get robbed by not reinstating the service that was available. Our kids aren't a bargaining chip for our political or religious advantage. Please vote to reinstate Centerstones MOU. Let's figure out how to add services humanely and constitutionally.
That concludes, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you to, to all of you that spoke, all of you that didn't speak, but thank you for being here. I, I believe with, I don't even remember who said it, but the comment that, that all of us care about kids, about young people or we wouldn't be here. So I think that's the one thing that we can all agree on. We don't have a lot of time left here to get into, to our agenda. If, if somebody has a, a burning desire to, to talk about something, we've got about five minutes and then we'll need to take a brief break before we get into our regular monthly meeting. So I'll, I'll ask my peers here on the desks, does anyone have a, have a burning desire, something you'd like to pull off the agenda? And we got about five minutes and then we'll have to take a brief break, so.
Chair, the only thing I would say is, are you doing, typically at this point you do committee updates, so you're gonna save that for a different time?
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that. Okay. I'm, I'm, I don't have any lights. I don't see anybody wanting to, to bring anything up, so that would be a good time. Thank you, Mr. Congress, to start with you, legislative update.
We can't do that. We, I just ended public comment. You can send in an email.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, yes, the update from the legislative chair is that right now we are gearing up for what will be our legislative agenda going into the next session. I should note that nine of us will be delegates for the TSBA delegation that is held at the end of our board conference, that'll be in November, and other than that, there's no pressing issues. The 114th will reconvene sometime in January.
Okay. So come on down, policy?
Our meeting is September the 29th at 4:30.
September.
29th at 4:30.
Finance?
We will look to schedule a financial meeting next month, probably towards the end of the month. I'll work with everybody in the best available time slot.
We're gonna have a meeting either October 20th or October 27th, at which point we'll share a project that we've got going that we will present to the county commission to show what the past three phases of capital funding has brought forth, so.
Okay. Athletics, Mr. Slater?
Thanks. Coach Tim James and I and Scott Bennett, we've sort of been working on a vision statement and a mission statement, so I'm not gonna take the time to, to read those, but if you do wanna read them, I'll just set them up here during the break and you can come look.
Okay. And Mr. Groh, transportation?
No update.
No, no update there. Okay, good. Okay, anything else? Because I'm gonna adjourn us for about a 10-minute break, okay? Our work session stands adjourned. Our work session stands adjourned.